Good evening. It is six o'clock. I'm calling to order the Fountain City Councilmember for April 9th, 2024. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rick.
Here.
Councilmember Hinton.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Hersberg.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Present.
All seven members present.
Thank you very much. That takes us on to item 4.1, Presentations. The first presentation we have tonight is from the Pike's Peak Library District. Shannon McDonald, please come down. If we could just get each one of you to state your name for the record, please.
My name is Shannon McDonald. I am the Fountain Manager for the Pike's Peak Library District.
My name's Mark Fletcher. I'm the Fountain Library Supervisor.
I'm Michelle O'Brien. I'm the Supervisory Library Tech for Grant Library at Fort Carson.
Hi, I'm Sarah Rumza, Grant Library, Fort Carson.
I promise not to take too much of your time, but thank you esteemed councilmembers and Madam Mayor for having us here. Today is April 9th, 2024, and it is the third day of National Library Week. And specifically, it is National Library Workers' Day, so I just wanted to take a moment to talk about the value that our libraries bring to our communities, and specifically, the value that the Fountain Library brings and Grant Library for Fountain, Fort Carson. We are bastions of community. We offer our services to the public, often free of charge, and we are supported by the community members' taxpayer dollars through property taxes and other grants and opportunities. Whether you're coming into the library to sign up for the Winter Adult Reading Program, or you're bringing your little ones to toddler time and storytime, we're here to help you as members of our community. With all of that said, I want to give a special shout out to all of the staff at Fountain Library who have been with the library district for some time and are equally passionate about the services that they provide to each member of the community. I also wanted to let everybody know that Fountain Library will be hosting an open house for community members, both old and new, where we will have an event with scavenger hunt, prizes, and all sorts of activities for various community members so that you can learn what it is we have to offer you guys. That event is this Saturday, April 13th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Fountain Library just down the street. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that sounds exciting, and thank you for coming tonight and sharing about National Library Week, and appreciate everything you do. You go in there after school, and that library is usually full of people, kids. They're after school, and it's a great resource for the community, and a lot of people there are using the computers. And so, thank you very much for everything you all do over there to provide for our citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a proclamation recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Katiana Jones and the Child, Youth, and Family Services Director, and Christina Lotus, El Paso County Department of Human Services and Public Information Officer. I did ask Councilmember Rick to please read that into the record. I'm having a dental issue, and it's rather difficult to talk, so I asked him to do that for me. If you ladies would like to come down. And...
Hello, thank you again for having us here this evening, and I'm actually not going to be the one to share some words, but Manager Sandra Martnik will be doing that for us. Thanks.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mayor and trustees. April is an opportunity to highlight the role we all have in preventing child abuse and neglect. Child safety is a cornerstone to a strong community and one that Fountain and the entire region embraces. As of April 2nd, 5,749 calls have been made this year to the Child Abuse and Neglect Reporting Hotline about El Paso County children. Not all calls turn into cases. We don't expect those calling to know what abuse or neglect looks like, only the need to have a concern for a child. Every bit of information can help caseworkers see the bigger picture of what a family is experiencing. Staff at the El Paso County Department of Human Services are focused on working towards the safety, permanency, and well-being of the children in our community. We could not do this critical work without the ongoing support of this community. There are simple ways to support families in our community. It may be listening to a parent who is struggling, offered a babysit, or even offered to provide a break. If you suspect child abuse or neglect, call the statewide hotline at 1-844-CO4KIDS. The number is answered 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and calls are confidential. We did bring something for you, some pinwheels. These represent a childlike whimsy and lightheartedness, and our vision for a place where all children grow up happy, healthy, and prepared to succeed in supportive families and communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, if you could just give them to staff over there, that'd be great. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down tonight. And Councilmember Rick, would you like to go ahead with the proclamation?
A proclamation recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas finding solutions for child abuse and neglect, a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, requires input and action from everyone, because the well-being of our children today will shape the future of Colorado and our community. And whereas childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse and neglect. And whereas all parents and caregivers need support sometimes, and supporting all children and families early is far less costly to a society and individuals than healing them from trauma. And whereas community leaders, policymakers, and elected officials play a unique role in building a community for kids by understanding the programs and policies that support child maltreatment prevention, listening to parents' needs, and examining community planning through the lens of, the lens to build healthy communities. And whereas effective prevention efforts succeed because of partnerships created among human services agencies, public health, the District Attorney's Office, schools, faith, and civic organizations, the medical community, law enforcement, first responder agencies, business community, nonprofit, and concerned citizens. And whereas everyone plays a role in preventing child abuse and neglect, helping to build thriving communities so that families and children may also thrive. Now, therefore, the city of Fountain, Colorado hereby proclaims the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. No matter where you live, everyone has the power to contribute towards a brighter tomorrow for all children. Done this ninth day of August, 2024.
April. Thank you excellently said August.
Excuse me, April.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for coming down today and presenting that. Thank you. All right. All right, that takes us on to item 2024, Congressional Special Election. Mr. Steve Schleicher, our county clerk and recorder. I heard a presentation that Mr. Schleicher did a few weeks ago for the county commissioners, and realized how absolutely confusing this election could potentially be for some people, because we have a general election and a primary election going on in the same, at the same time, and some people, not in the city of Fountain, but right outside our boundaries, might actually receive both those items in a ballot.
Absolutely. So, good evening, Madam Mayor.
Councilmembers, good to see you again. I appreciate the invite. I was under my desk in a fetal position. It's been a busy year in the clerk's office. But what I want to share with you and the citizens here in Fountain is we do have a congressional vacancy, and we are going to be coordinating that election here very soon. So what I want to sit there and talk to you all about, as the mayor alluded to, is talk about the District 4 vacancy election, the Colorado Governor order that my office received, the Secretary of State order that my office received, the congressional District 4 boundary, because many of us believe that all of El Paso County is encompassed in congressional District 5, which is not correct. And also conducting the congressional District 4 vacancy election, how my office is going to conduct that, and then also answer any questions that you and/or the public may have. So, on March 12th, 2024, many of us know that the Honorable Ken Buck, Member of Congress for Colorado's 4th Congressional District, delivered a letter of resignation to Governor Jared Polis. Congressman Buck's letter specified that his resignation would be effective at the end of the calendar day on March 22nd, 2024. So, several Saturdays ago, my staff and I were in the office. We are awaiting the Governor and the Secretary of State's order, which we did receive. So on March 23rd, 2024, Governor Polis issued an executive order announcing that the congressional vacancy election would be held on June 25th, 2024, the date already set by law for the 2024 Colorado State Primary Election. Let me share with you, this is probably going to be confusing for many of our voters. One of which is a primary election is a contested election when you are filling a vacancy for a congressional or House seat. That is a general election, and different rules, different federal laws, state laws apply, and I'll go into those. So, under Colorado law, a congressional vacancy election shall be conducted and the results thereof surveyed and certified in all respects as nearly as practicable in like manner as for general elections. So again, we're sitting here blurring some lines between a primary election and a general election. So, several minutes after the Governor issued his order, we received the Secretary of State's order. That was received on March 23rd, and she issued an order stating that the congressional vacancy election must be conducted in as similar a manner to a general election as practicable. All counties participating in the congressional vacancy election on June 25th, 2024 must follow this order to effectuate the law. So, we are getting ready to do something that's only been done once in our nearly 148-year history here in Colorado, holding a special election to fill a vacant seat in the U.S. House of Representatives. Growing up here, I've lived down here in Security, Whitefield Fountain since 1975, graduated Whitefield High School, so I'm very familiar with the area, and I do remember this happening here in our community. Many of us will remember NASA astronaut John "Jack" Swiger Jr. was elected to Congress in Colorado in 1982, but died before being sworn in, so that was the last time we had a special election. So Colorado's 4th Congressional District is located on the eastern part of the state. The district encompasses most of the rural eastern plains, as well as portions of the Colorado Front Range, including Loveland, Highlands Ranch, Castle Rock, Parker, and Windsor. Colorado counties in congressional District 4, there are 21, which includes El Paso County. As you can see here, the latest information I could pull is taking a look at the Congressional District 4 Registered Voter Breakdown by Democrat, Republican, minor party, and unaffiliated from 2022 information from the Secretary of State's office. Here's what the boundary looks like. So what you're going to be looking at is any citizens that live east of Calhan or Yoder are going to be voting in this special election. So, total active voters, we have 6,240. As mentioned, is Highway 24, Calhan East, the county line road to Albert, Lincoln County, and also Yoder East out to Lincoln, Albert County, where we're sitting here taking a look. Those are going to be the precincts that are going to be affected by the special election. So how is my office going to conduct this election? By merging a primary and a general election. So the congressional vacancy election race will be printed on the same ballot as the state primary ballot for voters who are eligible to participate in both elections. A ballot containing only the congressional vacancy election race will be printed for voters affiliated with minor parties. This is very important. When you're in a primary election, is individuals that are registered Republicans get a Republican ballot. If you register Democrat, you get a Democrat ballot, and if you're registered as unaffiliated, you get both ballots in accordance with Colorado law. Minor parties do not participate in a primary election. However, now that we have a general election to coordinate, is we have to now include our minor parties. The congressional vacancy election race will be the last race listed on the ballot. There will be sufficient visual separation and graphical delineation to make clear that the congressional vacancy election race is separate from the primary election. Active registered unaffiliated voters, as I just mentioned, shall be mailed both a Democrat and a Republican ballot in accordance with our Colorado law, which will include instructions that an unaffiliated voter can only return one ballot, either the Democrat or Republican ballot in CD4. This is very, very important. Sadly, in our last election, the presidential primary on March 5th, we had over 2,000 voters unaffiliated that voted both ballots. Neither vote counted. So, counties with eligible to vote in the congressional District 4 congressional vacancy election must have the following number of VSPCs, which is our voter service polling, you know, polling centers where you can vote in person. This is where I was extremely concerned. On a general election, we host and open over 40 VSPCs throughout El Paso County. During a primary election, we open eight to 11 VSPCs. These are very expensive, because you have to sit there and look at the equipment, the election judges that you are paying to facilitate that. But with that being said, I was sitting here concerned in regards to open up 40 VSPCs in our eastern plains to conduct this election. So, beginning on June 17th... So, beginning on June 10, 2024, which is the 14th day before the final day of voting, and continuing until June 20, is El Paso County only needs to open and operate one VSPC at that time. Beginning on June 21, 2024, and open through the final day of voting, is again, we're only required to have one VSPC open within congressional District Four. On election day, June 25, again, we are only required to have one VSPC per the order here in El Paso County, and we are going to be opening that up in Calhan at the fairgrounds at Swing Hall. So, all VSPCs located in congressional District Four must be open at minimum during the following days and times. So as we sit there and take a look, these VSPC hours are going to be different than the ones for our primary election that we're going to have set up throughout El Paso County. But we're going to be open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. All other counties are going to be open the same time. We're going to be open four hours the Saturday prior to election day, and then we're going to be open 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on June 25, 2024, which is no different than any other VSPC we have in the county. The other order is we have, El Paso County must provide a minority language sample ballot and minority language in-person ballot under this statute. For a general election, we must provide a minority language sample ballot and minority language in-person ballot for the combined primary and also for the congressional vacancy election ballot. In addition, we already had our election plan certified, so we are now having to redo our election plan. So we are to provide to the Department of State a revised, updated version of our election plan for the June election no later than April 19, and we already submitted that and got it approved for the June 25 primary and congressional District Four vacancy. The other thing, as your clerk and recorder, I decided to do is El Paso County is going to provide separate instructions in all mail ballot packets to our voters located within congressional District Four that explains the presence of the congressional vacancy election on their ballot. These instructions will be provided as a separate insert. I am not including them on the normal ballot instruction page. A lot of folks, they just, a lot of times don't read that, but we're going to have a separate insert for those voters. In addition, as we have always done here in El Paso County, is we are going to be reporting those election results for the June 25, 2024 election by precinct. So are there any questions? Comments?
Better you than me. Yeah. That's why I wanted you to come explain it, because I think it's, it's kind of a very, very unique situation, and it's hard enough when unaffiliated to get the two ballots. They think, oh, my gosh, I got two ballots. It means I can vote twice. You just said 2,000 people did that.
Yes, ma'am.
And that can make the, a difference in an election.
Absolutely.
So if you're unaffiliated, please make turn, you can only vote on one ballot. You can't pick Joe over here and Sue over there and Jill, right? You got to just vote one. Okay?
Yep.
And then, and then the people right outside our eastern boundaries might be calling yep saying, who are you voting for in this CD Four race? And you're going to be saying, I'm not. I'm voting in CD Five. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be kind of confusing. So thank you for coming down here and
Absolutely.
And explaining it to us. Any questions from anybody up here or comments? Oh, Councilmember Duncan.
Thank you for coming down. These are
Yes, ma'am.
Great explanations about what's going on with the vacancy election. So with the, I viewed the presentation that you gave to the county, and so when you were talking about the, the two ballots that were coming in and, and trying to figure out how can we better help those who are confused about whether or not they voted or not, do, are these ballots mailed at the same time, or do they get separate ones? Because we don't know when they're delivered, right?
Right. Well, we do. In fact, I actually changed that when I became your clerk and recorder. We have a new system where I can track your ballot the moment it is printed, inserted, and put in your mailbox, even through transit and through USPS. So if you were to call me and say, Steve, I have yet to receive my ballot, I can tell you now exactly where it sat with our new Mars system. I track every single one.
Oh, that's great. So would it be possible for the envelope to be different?
So
A different color?
Right. So during a primary election, as many of you have probably noted, that there's different colors on different envelopes. If you are a Republican or a registered Democrat, your ballot envelope has a little line on there that's the same color. If you are an unaffiliated, it is a different color, and here is why. A lot of voters get confused with that, is when you process the ballot, keep in mind, it's our neighbors, our friends, and our relatives that are stepping up to be election judges. These are folks that are giving up their time to coordinate these elections. In accordance with Colorado law, if it's basically a registered Democrat or an unaffiliate, or excuse me, Republican during the primary, you have to have a bipartisan team, one Republican, one Democrat, opening that. However, if it's unaffiliated, you have to have three judges. You have to have an unaffiliated, a Republican, and a Democrat. That's the reason for the different colors. However, on the mine, a minor party ones, they will be the same color as a registered Republican and Democrat. There's 145 of minor party registered voters out of the eastern plains, and we are going to stuff those envelopes and the inserts ourselves in the office to save money.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a thing called Ballot Tracker.
There is.
Yeah. Can you explain how that works? Because I think it's pretty cool. Get a text and tells me where it's at.
Absolutely. So, Madam Mayor, you can sign up for Ballot Trax, where as soon as you sit there and you get your ballot, you will sit there and be notified that your ballot is in the mail. Every time we drop ballots at the USPS location on Fountain Boulevard, is I'm there, and as soon as they are pulled off the truck and start processing, is individuals that are enrolled in that will get a text message letting them know their ballot is on the way, where you can go ahead and track the same thing as I do with our new Mars system. Very good system.
And where can they find that? Is it on the?
So you could Google Ballot Trax or even go to the Secretary of State's website and download it. I even have the link on my website as El Paso County Clerk and Recorder.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, because it's great, because it, when you drop it in the, in the slot over by the PD or wherever, you know, you kind of wonder, and then in a day or two, you get a text that says your ballot's been received, and then you get
Yep.
Another text that says your signature passed, so, which is really nice.
Absolutely.
So, thank you very much. Thank you for
Thank you.
Coming down here tonight and sharing all that. Any other questions from anybody? Good luck, and we'll see you in July, huh?
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, that takes us to Scott Asher with a powers extension study update.
Actually, my name is Howard Schwartz. I'm an engineer with the El Paso County Department of Public Works, and I'm the project manager for the, for the South Powers Study. And we're here today to just to give you an update on the progress of the study, and to do that will be our consultant from Wilson and Company, Scott Asher. Thank you.
Thanks, Howard. Yes, as we, as I mentioned, that we'll, we'll be doing an update on the South Powers Extension Study that's been going on since 2022. I know we were here about a year ago at council, so I'm not going to go through all the previous information that was provided at that time, but rather sort of give the update and what the, and go through the recommendations as the study is coming close to a conclusion. So quick project overview, as everybody recalls, the, the study is looking at extending Powers Boulevard from where the current terminus at Mesa Ridge Parkway to a new connection to I-25, generally north of the Pueblo County and El Paso County line. It is a project that is a collaboration between El Paso County as the lead agency, the Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, the city of Fountain, City of Carros Springs, and its, and the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments. So as we look at, at the sort of the schedule of where we started back in early 2022, we're coming close to the end. We just got through our public open house process in February and are working on finalizing the PEL, which is the Planning Environmental Linkage Study Report, with ideally trying to get that published in the May timeframe. So as we talked about previously, there were a lot of alternatives that were considered through the process. We really did start with looking at what was done previously, the original study that was done in 2000 and 2001, updated a lot of the existing conditions, updated the areas, looked at what alternatives were still there, looked at the alignments that were done at that point, eliminated some of them and identified new alignments as we went through that process. We had stringent scoring criteria or evaluation criteria for the, for those different alignments as we went through that, and, and really looked at a lot of public outreach as well to get people's reaction, stakeholder reaction, as well as private, private property owners. Through that process, we went through a Level One screening for just sort of, does it meet purpose and need? Level Two, which is more detailed to try and identify the actual corridors, and then a Level Three, which looked at sort of what that corridor width needed to be as we went through that whole process. So based on the alternatives that were considered and the, the screening criteria, we came up with a recommendation that's basically a phased corridor solution. The two corridors that rose to the top were basically the, the E3 alignment that comes to a new connection at about one mile post 125, and the H3 alignment that comes to a new connection at about 121.6, I believe it is, down by the Pike's Peak International Raceway. The blue and the green are sort of, are basically depict the different corridor widths we'd be looking at to be able to preserve, to build the corridor and, and allow for different amenities and alternatives on the outsides of the corridor as well. So as we went through that process and looked at that, we started identifying what are projects, how would you implement the corridor plan as a whole? We looked at basically breaking it up into sort of nine distinct projects that seemed to, it seemed to be, to make sense and could be fundable and have sort of independent utility with the idea sort of starting up Mesa Ridge and Empowers right now, looking at that first sort of phase, first project being an interchange type project there to, to do that great separation. Also looking at constructing an interchange down at I-25 at mile, mile post 125.6, I'm talking too fast. And then we'd have Mesa Ridge and, and Squirrel Creek, sort of that, that connection between Mesa Ridge and Squirrel Creek, sort of being that next sort of phased approach. And then as we continue south through that corridor, tying it, as you get south to Squirrel Creek, it's going to sort of depend on timing of different development, money, funding, things like that that would go through. The, the longer term piece would be Projects Eight and Nine, where you'd basically extend that corridor down to the south all the way to the PPIR. That's a piece of the corridor that would come, you know, we're looking at, you know, over 30-plus years before that piece of the corridor could be potentially implemented. So one of the things, we've gone through the public engagement process through late '23 and into the, over the, the open house process, we did a lot of outreach. We sent over 200 certified letters to property owners in the area of the corridor to try and make sure that people that were potentially impacted would be notified of the project. We had 74 property owners contact the team, and we had 45 one-on-one meetings with property owners between October 10 and November 2. We also met with a small group of about 30 HOA members along Little Pueblo Road on October 18. We also had a stakeholder virtual meeting on October 13, where we had 20 different organizations represented of about 50 invited. That included military, business organizations, major landowners, developers, things like that, that were all part of that stakeholder process. We also had the virtual open house, number two. We had that open for about a month that, and it closed on February 19. All the information that was presented at the open house is still available at the southpowersstudy.com website. And so there, there's a lot of good information there and a lot more, a lot more information than I'm able to, to present today as well. So one of the things that came out of a lot of the public engagement as we went through the initial screening of the corridor was refining and refinements to that corridor based on the information and, and the conversations we had a lot of, with a lot of the property owners, to try and minimize impact to private property as much as we could, and look at optimizing some of those impacts so we could try to reduce them. So that's what this, this is showing. The, the other piece, it is on the website, we do have a much more detailed map of the preferred, or for the recommended alignment and, and the phases there that you can zoom in on and see a lot more information as well as we move through that whole process. The next steps as we move forward, one of the big things is this is early, this is, again, it's a planning environmental linkage studies, and it is a study, so it's not a binding document at this stage as part of the environmental process, but it will feed into future environmental documents that would be your decision documents by project. So as we're finishing up the PEL study now, it'll sort of move into that next phase of doing some of the concept and preliminary design, looking at property preservation or corridor preservation, as well as identifying funding for construction. There's currently no construction funding available for the project. The city of Carros Springs and El Paso County through the PPRTA do have funds set aside beginning in 2025 to move the project into some of that design phase and, and dive more into the details and into some of the permitting as we move forward. But there is no construction funding available at this stage. We're looking at this still being a long-term project. It's a, it's a large-scale project, and finding the funding will take, take considerable time as we move forward. Some of the other upcoming public process that we're going through, we presented at the PPRTA Citizens Advisory Commission Committee last week. We're here presenting to you today to get, to get you all up to speed on where the process is. We're going to be meeting and presenting to the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments' Board of Directors tomorrow morning and the PPRTA Board tomorrow afternoon, culminating with a presentation to the Planning Commission, we're anticipating right now sometime in May for a final adoption of the recommendations into the, the long train, the long-term master plan for, for the county. Questions?
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming down. Now, this is not anything we're voting on tonight. This is just informational item.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure everybody is aware of that in the audience, that we're not voting on this tonight. We're just getting information out there. Where can people go online and find that, that report?
The, the southpowersstudy.com, the website, the project website is where the report will be posted. The existing conditions report that was done is already posted there, as well as the alternatives analysis memo that was reviewed by FHWA and approved. So once we have the, the Planning Environmental Linkage Study Report completed, it will also be posted to the website there for review.
And you're not breaking ground anytime soon?
No.
No. Okay. All right. Councilmember Rick?
Sir, can you go back to the map that shows, has the stars on them?
Yes.
Yeah, that one.
Mm-hmm.
For the audience and for the members of the council, can you show us on the map where the areas that this is going to go through the actual city limits of Fountain? It looks like it goes around to the outside, but I can't tell for sure.
Yes, so the actual city limits, the the part of the project that actually goes through the city limits is going to be the piece between Mesa Ridge Parkway and Mark Shuffle Road, which is the proposed Mesa Ridge Development Area that is currently in the city of Fountain. As it continues south, it does skirt around the east side of the city as it continues south.
So between star one and star three?
Yes.
Up there, that is the only area that would be going through the city limits of Fountain. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
All right. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Any questions from any other council members or comments? All right, any questions from staff or? Nope. All right. All right, so can you say that website again, just one last time?
I will put it back up there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
There it is.
Okay.
W W W dot South Powers Study dot com is the project website.
And is there an email address at that website that is there an email address at that website that if people?
There is.
Have questions?
Yes, there's on the website, there's contact us, so there's an email there, as well as you can submit comments through that through the website and it goes in and we address those and incorporate any comments we receive into the public process document.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just an information item, so if you have questions, he would be the person that you would contact through that website. Okay. You can, and if you want to say something that's not on the agenda, you can fill out a card at Public to Be Heard, so. All right, that takes us on to item 4.2, Board, Commission and Committee. There are none tonight. Item five, Correspondence Comments and Ex officio Reports. Mr. Trainer?
I don't have anything, Madam Mayor.
Nothing from me either.
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Good evening, nothing tonight, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, I just want to remind you that I will be providing a department update next council meeting. I'll provide some updated statistics, beacon beacon statistics and kind of plans for the summer, so I'll have that for you all next council meeting.
Can we back up to Chief Graham? I was super excited to see your announcement on Facebook today about the Autism Night?
Yes, ma'am. Correct.
April 30th?
April 30th, 5:30 to 7:30 at Station Fire Station One.
Okay, great.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Hope you have a great attendance. All right, I T. No?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Just a brief announcement tonight, this is for me, I just wanted to let you all know that I am officially retiring from the City of Fountain after 25 wonderful years here. My last day in the office will be this Friday, but I still will be available to contact with any questions for quite some time. And I just wanted to thank everybody. It's been an honor to work for you and with you throughout my tenure here and to publicly thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for helping me through this whole time. That's it.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I would just say we're not going to let her go that easy. May 25th is her official 25-year date, so we've got to keep her through the end of May, so. But I can just tell you that Sylvia was literally the first city employee that I met in 2007 when I came here to the city and just have really enjoyed working with her and we're just going to miss you big time.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you've done because you've done a lot for this community and you're the first smiling face a lot of people see when they came through City Hall for a lot of years, so thank you very much and good luck with whatever you decide to do afterwards. And if it's nothing, good for you.
Mayor, I have one other thing I wanted to add to that.
Yes.
Forgot. In after her official 25-year date, we're going to do a little thing with at the council meeting, have a little pre-reception and and so we'll be doing kind of something special then too, so.
Like the first meeting in June?
Likely, yeah.
Okay, all righty, okay. I do have a question since we're on the city clerk and we just had Steve Schleicher here do his presentation. The general election is June 25th. That is a city council night. Could we consider adding on the next agenda, maybe moving that to a different night?
Absolutely. We'll have it on the next agenda.
Would council like to do that, not have it on election night?
For sure.
Okay. It just seems like people are a bit distracted on that night, you know, so.
You got it.
Okay, thank you. All righty, okay. Councilmember Rick?
Just a quick announcement, I will not physically be here at the next council meeting. I am going to North Dakota to visit my grandchildren. I will be attending virtually though. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Applegate?
I got you, Scott. I'm going to make a motion, we'll make Sylvia stay, you know, for till like the end of the year. No, but out of all seriousness, Madam Clerk, thank you, thank you for all the years you put in, I appreciate it. I'm going to miss looking over there and not seeing you, so. But enjoy your retirement, seriously, you've earned it.
Councilmember Estes?
Congrats, Sylvia, you deserve it. One announcement, the Fountain Valley Historical Society Museum will be hosting their first talk of the year on May 18th. It will be at the Fountain Library and the topic will be on Doc Suzy. If you don't know anything about Doc Suzy, if you ever saw the movie, the TV program, Dr. Quinn Medicine Woman, it's loosely based on Doc Suzy, who is one of the first female physicians in Colorado. She started up in Cripple Creek and ended up for decades up at Frazier. And so that will be at 10 a.m. at the Fountain Public Library on May 18th. That's all.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
Yes, Sylvia, congratulations. We're going to miss you. I appreciate all the time and effort you put into the city. You know, it's it's hard when you lose good people because you lose that experience and then you have to get somebody up in there and train that again, but I just really want you to know that we we appreciate all your efforts and all the knowledge that you brought here to the City of Fountain over those 25 years, so thank you.
Councilmember Harsburg?
Yeah, thank you. Echo all the sentiment. Who am I going to ask questions to? That's you're going to have big shoes to fill. So see, since last meeting, I attended the P P A C G meeting with actually several members up here, which was a great meeting, had a care and share tour by Nate Springer, which was a great opportunity to kind of see the scope of what they do there. I was just really blown away and Nate Springer, learning more about him, he's a pretty incredible individual. Attended an R F G meeting and that's roadway focus group for anyone who's unfamiliar. And just a little bit on that, the roadway focus group is a citizen-led focus group. It's been in existence since about 2017 with about six members. And so some changes will be forthcoming with that group. Most significantly will be growing the group from six to 10. So if you have an interest in serving on that focus group, you just let Todd know and he will collect that information. Right now, we have two representatives for each what we call roadway zone, which is different from a council ward. The zone map is available on the city website. Just put in their roadway focus group, it'll take you right to the map. So we're going to be expanding that from two members per ward to three. I have since 2017 served as a representative for Ward One, and so I'll be stepping down and taking an at-large position. So those are some changes and I think that's about it.
Great, thank you. I think that's great, you're expanding that. Councilmember Duncan?
All I can say is wow, I wasn't prepared to to make a speech with Sylvia and I don't want to look at her because I don't want to cry, but thank you so much for all of your hard work and everything you've done here. Again, you can have all the education, but knowledge and and what they call grandfathering, we can't get anyone that can go back all the years you've been here and give us all the history, so we probably need to freeze your brain, huh? So again, thank you so much for all of your hard work and everything you've done here for the city. You're going to really be missed and I don't know, you have to tell the next person, they have to make sure they bring us snacks, right? So on a lighter note, a fun fact about, I guess, I don't know if it's a fun fact, but one of the facts that I learned about our potholes here, that we have potholes all around Colorado and we have this dramatic freeze, and I'm sure Bob has told us this before, but we have this freeze and then we have this thaw cycle. And we know that one minute it's snowing in Colorado, it's a blizzard at 9 a.m. and by noon it's melting. So water gets under the cracks in the roadway, it freezes and expands and is creating holes in the asphalt and that's Colorado roads. So that's why we are seeing so many. We've had a lot of snow this year and that's what it's doing to our roads. For Chief Graham, there's a Senate Bill 24-169 and it's beginning July 2023. State trooper also includes an employee of the Division of Fire Prevention and Control in the Department of Public Safety who is classified in the firefighter seven class title. So just wanted to give you that heads up that you can look into that. It had many more explanations about that, but just wanted you to be able to look at that. I also went to a luncheon for Ford Evolution and it was very inspiring. They celebrated and highlight significant milestones over the past three decades that have positively influenced the lives of our youth. They are raising money for their programs and they are having a new Forge Teen Center. So we're always saying there's nothing for our youth to do, but Ford Evolution is having a fundraiser for a new teen center and the center will be one of a kind. It will have a community space that will provide young people's age 10 to 19 with a centralized hub across Colorado Springs and the area to create community. And they are also hosting an essay contest with the grand prize being a catered graduation party up to 25 people. So if you have a graduating senior like I do, it's worth it. So you can go to their webpage at ford evolution dot org or you can call 719-475-7815 and that's forge evolution dot org. And they are giving a catered graduation party up to 25 people for just writing and winning an essay contest. Also, I met with Dan Blankenship this week and his staff answered some questions for me and I wanted to let his boss know that I'm so glad that we hired him. He's such an expert and I really appreciated the time. He answered all my questions and there was no hurry up and rush and get out of the building, so I just want to tell you that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Just a reminder that tomorrow is C DOT Day of Remembrance. It's a day of remembrance they have for any C DOT workers that have lost their lives on the job in the last year. So if you see them out working alongside the road, they kind of take a day out of the offices and and actually help clean up and make our community look better. The theme this year is work zones are temporary, but actions behind the wheel are permanent. So that's a good one to remember because we all need to slow down out there, especially through our construction zones. Went to the Fountain P D Awards, great to recognize everyone and congratulations to everyone who who got their awards. It was a very moving ceremony. I went by one of the wayfinding study groups, that was really fun to do on what I hope people got a chance to participate in that. I told them they were at the wrong park and they needed to get down to the other park where the Easter egg hunt was and there was hundreds of people down there. So I believe that's what she did and I wanted to thank V F W and Legion for the egg hunt. That was fantastic for our community. Did you ever get a count on how many kids were out there? I mean, there was hundreds.
A lot.
A lot, yeah. So we had two egg hunts, two Saturdays in a row, first one the weekend before from the Bryce O'Brien Group and then this one and it was it was really, really great to see that in our community. Went to the Fountain Fire Department Promotions, congratulations again to all those people who earned their awards. I just think it's so exciting to see our people getting promoted from from within and earning earning all those certifications. And then I went by the Chamber Jive After Five event and that was a lot of fun just to hang out with everybody that I haven't seen for a while and just in a really, really relaxed atmosphere. So that was really good. Lot of stuff going on in the Capitol. If you see something on the news about a bill, look it up for yourself and see what's going on. There's at least eight anti-second amendment bills being run up there and if that's important to you, you need to be speaking up and making your voice heard. I did want to remind council that we discussed last year about changing Scott's evaluation that we do every year to doing it through the H R department. It's always been done through the city clerks department, moving it over to H R since we have a good H R department now. And we will be doing that and so you will be getting the review for that in the mail in the next few weeks and if you could just sit down and do that really quickly and it's all online and all you have to do is return it really quickly and and we'll get his review done, okay? All right, thank you very much. And that takes us on to item six, Public to Be Heard. I have two cards up here tonight and I, the first one I received was from Aaron Heims from the V F W, otherwise known as one of the other egg egg hunters or Easter bunnies or? Sir?
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Mayor, City Council. Start off on a lighter note, Dr. Duncan, you know, you were talking about that catered graduation party for writing an essay. You know, we had hundreds of graduates this year that failed to write that essay for a $35,000 scholarship. So the Voice of Democracy Scholarship for 2025 was just released. It will be due on October 1st, so that can be found on our website or the V F W dot org website. Want to acknowledge that we are, we will be meeting with you, Madam Mayor, on Monday to go over the final plans for the veteran, sorry, the Memorial Day Ceremony coming up next month. Events we have at the V F W coming up, we have our steak dinner this Friday at 5:00 and then we'll be closing our doors from Sunday through Friday next week. We're actually going to do some renovations. We're going to get a new floor laid down, all new tables and chairs in there, having a new experience for people when they come in. And then we're going to close again for one week next month. We're putting a new roof on, repainting the outside and then we're going to have a grand reopening on May 24th, which is the Friday before Memorial Day. So we'll have live music down there, we'll have free food, we're going to bring out the smokers, do a pulled pork dinner and, you know, invite everybody down there just to see what the V F W is and remind everybody that we're open to the public. The week that we do reopen, so the week of the 22nd, we continue our our pool on Mondays, Taco Tuesdays and everything we have going on. We are going to do another dinner and show on Friday, the 26th at 6 p.m. Once again, that's a show or that's a an event that's targeting the Don't Ask, Don't Tell veterans, really trying to get them to be more represented in more represented in the veteran organizations here around town. And then we're going to have live music with Who Do Honey on that Saturday, the 27th. We're doing a day, V F W Day of Service on May 4th, a little bit different than last year. Last year, we focused on one of the parks over by Cross Creek within the City of Fountain. This year, the District District Five for V F W polled all the cities, looking for larger projects to bring the district together to do. Did not have a great response from either Colorado Springs or the Fountain community, so we'll be out at Pike's Peak Cemetery, helping them on May 4th, do some maintenance out in that area and I'm sure the other veterans organizations are going to be out there as well. And then the only other thing that I wanted to highlight is we have our annual picnic coming up in August. You should see a flyer on our social media pages. We're going to host our first annual barbecue competition this year. What we're asking people to do is, you know, bring your smokers down, we'll have the generators out there, show us, show us your best stuff and first place in each event will get a trophy. So we're looking at brisket category, rib category, pork shoulder, chicken quarters, and then a special your choice. If you don't come in first place, don't worry, try harder next year and you might get a trophy. We're not going to give a trophy to everybody. But there is a Q R code and a link on our website. If you sign up, it will ask you to pay a dollar, we will refund the dollar, it's just the system that we're using makes you pay, I don't understand why, but please, please sign up, come out and show us your worth, is all I have.
Exciting. Thank you very much. And to be followed by John Langley from Legion.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me come up here and talk a couple of minutes, just to tell you a couple of things that the Legion has been doing in the the past and what we got going on in the near future. On the 29th- Uh, on the twenty-ninth, we participated at the Pike's Peak National Ceremony, uh, Cemetery, and it was for the Vietnam Veterans, uh, Ceremony Day. And, um, we were there, our auxiliary was there, and our riders were there. They did a, a color guard to come into it. Uh, that same day, we also recognized our Legion members who served in the Vietnam era during the, during the dinner that night, and we gave them all a certificate. I said, "Thank you." I talked a little bit because I think that the veteran or the military members now that are coming back and are getting patted on the back and saying, "Good job," has a lot to do with how those veterans were treated when they came home. Um, matter of fact, I was hoping to see Mr. Clements here today because I, I had a certificate for him to give to him. Um, our Easter egg, it was a, uh, very good turnout, uh, with the, uh, America, with the, uh, VFW auxiliary, and our, our auxiliary, uh, did it, and I would guesstimate anywhere between two hundred and fifty-three to three hundred and kids were there that day. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for coming out and, and supporting that. Uh, what we have going in the near future, um, this Friday, our auxiliary's doing their Chicken Fried Chicken Dinner. Uh, usually people are licking the plate, uh, before they leave because it's that good. Um, I am tracking on April the fifteenth that we have the, uh, meeting for Memorial Day, and on April twenty-seventh, we will be doing our American Legion Family Community Service Day, where we will be going to Pike's Peak National Cemetery, and we will be going from the front gate there all the way to Mark Shuffle, picking up all the trash out of the road from there. I also want to put this on your radars. Uh, it's a little bit down the line, but we are just in the, uh, beginning stages of doing our first inaugural, uh, golf tournament, which will be at the Country Club of Colorado. And, uh, I will have flyers coming out soon, how to pay in there, and we're looking for donations from, uh, organizations and businesses, uh, for, uh, charter, um, representation. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. Those are the only two cards I have. So that takes us on a consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. So on our consent agenda, we have item seven A, and that is all. Uh, what would council like to do with that? Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes. Motion carry. Okay, that takes us on to item eight A, Old Business. Resolution number twenty-four dash zero zero five, a resolution amending Exhibit D of Resolution twenty-two dash zero two three for costs incurred in the administration and processing of license fees, service charges, applications, permits, vehicle inspection fees, and other fees and charges in authorizing the waiver or reduction of certain fees or ordinance. Commander Racine.
All right. Good morning, council, or good evening, council, good evening, mayor. Uh, so this time's my second time up here to talk about this. I'm going to make it very brief, not going to try to get sidetracked with anything, uh, with any questions. We are here to talk about the fees associated with body worn camera, uh, and, and that's pretty much it. Uh, go to the next slide. Or, so right now, the current and future of the police department, uh, we don't have an online payment portal system. That is something that's generating a lot of problems with our records folks, uh, from body worn camera to accident reports to anything. Uh, I know that this needs to be sought in conjunction with IT in the twenty twenty-five budget year. This is something that we have to look into because unfortunately all online portal systems do cost fees somehow, some way, so we have to look at that budget for it, but that is something that we need to work on this year, uh, and seek in the future. So until then, uh, as everyone knows, per state law, uh, the city is going to have a different website come June or July, uh, per the, uh, requirements that all government entities with their websites be ADA compliant. So we don't know how that's going to look with an online payment portal and that kind of thing, or what kind of section the police department's going to be able to have on our city website. Uh, and then currently I'm restructuring our front office and positions within records and body worn camera technicians to be more efficient and customer service based. Probably sixty percent of what is brought into the police department lobby is pertaining to records, body worn camera, uh, traffic accident reports, that type of thing. Uh, the rest of it is going to be people wanting to speak with an officer, VIN inspections, and sex offender registrations. And then we will be seeking soon to put this on your radar to make our part, one part-time employee that we have within our records division a full-time employee, uh, just due to the amount of work that those ladies do back there. Okay, body worn camera request by year. I know this was brought up at the last council meeting that I spoke at about this. So twenty twenty-four, the average number of videos per request, so that is the average number of videos that are associated with a call for service or with a case report. So out of those, citizen requests, we've had nine that have had to been redacted. Uh, that's nine citizen requests with an average of eight body worn cameras in that nine requests. Uh, attorneys, and this is private attorneys, this is not, uh, the district attorney or other law enforcement agencies. These are attorneys that have to pay for it. It has to be redacted. Just because you're an attorney, uh, working for a personal injury claim does not mean they're, get certain information or juvenile information, things of that nature that's sensitive. And then we processed a hundred and ninety-six, uh, district attorney and law enforcement agency requests with a total number of sent so far this year, two thousand and thirty-one. So our body worn camera technician is responsible for the redaction videos from the citizen requests and the private attorney requests, which is only totaling thirty-six. But the main bulk of their job, along with the duties of working also the front window and that type of thing, is processing all of the body worn camera requests for the district attorney and the law enforcement agencies that request them. Uh, as you can see, the number is growing. In twenty twenty-two, just to put a little asterisk on this, we were priorly sending, uh, all videos that were associated with arrests and case to the district attorney. We stopped doing that until discovery is requested by them. They said it was kind of jamming up their system, and it was kind of pointless for us to be doing that. So that dropped it down to twenty, or thirty-seven hundred for that year. But again, as we've add more additional officers, there's more additional arrests, there's more additional officers on scene, the number of videos that ends up being sent by our technician goes up. So last time I did not have, uh, our Colorado revised statutes, uh, that shows us what we can and cannot charge. Uh, so under statute, criminal justice agencies may assess reasonable fees not to exceed actual costs. Again, just to tell everybody and people that weren't here before, this is criminal justice records. This is anything that is produced by the police department in reference to arrests, case reports, traffic stops, anything that has personal identifying information where a criminal justice entity has obtained it. This is not corrobore information. This is criminal justice information. And then number three, the provisions of the section should not apply to discovery materials that the criminal justice agency is required to provide, uh, pursuant to Rule sixteen. That is going to be discovery for the district attorney's office or other prosecuting agencies. But to step back is we cannot exceed the actual costs, including but not limited to personnel, equipment, uh, for the search, retrieval, and redaction of criminal justice records requested. This governs all. This is not just body worn camera, but again, this is all criminal justice records that the police department holds. So taking that not to exceed our actual costs, I know there was talk at the last council meeting that maybe we should be charging this. Well, what if we charge this? And I know some people, we, again, we are not here to make money. That's not the goal of this. But also, we need to understand that when somebody requests something that they are not getting from an attorney or a prosecutor, and it is for whatever use that they're going to use it for, if it be for a civil trial, if it be for, uh, to give to Frank Dazar or anything like that, uh, there are fees that are required for that, and people have to pay that. So not to exceed actual cost, here is the actual cost of our body worn camera technician. Their hourly range is between twenty-two and twenty-nine, twenty-five an hour. Um, the actual cost is forty-five dollars and fifty cents. That is with including benefits as a full-time employee. There, you know, the workman's comp, the medical, the dental, retirement, all that kind of stuff. So again, the current costs and proposed changes, right now it's forty-five dollars for a video and ten dollars for an additional video on the same call for service. So if we have two videos, they're paying fifty-five dollars. Uh, that may take nine hours, uh, for a body worn camera technician to redact, depending, again, if there's juveniles and personal information and things that have to be redacted. The proposed change, thirty-five dollars, non-refundable initial charge to include the research fee of five dollars. It will be billed at thirty dollars per each additional hour. The estimations are provided to the requister as an hour of video equals three hours of redaction time. That is a constant average that we have with the redactions. Um, and if, can full request payment, or can have full payment, uh, prior to redaction if we had a payment portal? Uh, at this time, we get individuals that are requesting from New York City because they have moved and they need a copy of the video. They have no way to pay for it except for to have, either they send a check, or they have to have somebody that they know here come in, pay for it before we can, uh, send them the link for the redacted video. So the payment portal is a thing, but again, I think that's something that we need to have the conversation with IT, uh, to find out what will work for us, especially with the new website that's coming out, um, but that'll also work for us not paying an exorbitant amount of fees or making the individual who's doing the request pay for those fees as well. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay. So tonight, we're being asked to, um, vote on the fees.
Correct.
The patient portal is a whole nother conversation.
Correct. This is just changing the fees from the forty-five, uh, and ten to the thirty-five dollars, and then, uh, thirty dollars an hour, one hour of video. It is billed at three hours.
Okay. Before I go to you, Councilmember Rick, just one real quick thing. Um, I want to let everybody know this will be public to be heard, right?
Yes.
You'll get your chance, but council did receive a letter from a citizen who couldn't be here tonight, and Troy, you're going to, uh, read that, but let me go to council, uh, questions first, so. Okay, Councilmember Rick?
Uh, thank you for your presentation, Commander Racine. Uh, question, does the law allow us as a city to charge one rate for somebody who is investigating a traffic accident and another rate for someone who is trying to get a domestic protection order?
Uh, no, it's going to be the exact same for anyone. Uh, body worn camera is separate from what we are required to provide by statute. Uh, anyone that is a, a victim of a crime and identified as a victim of a crime, uh, through a prosecutorial agency, uh, and the Victims' Rights Advocacy, we are required to give them the initial report for whatever the case is for free. They can also obtain everything if they are a victim that is going through the court process. They can obtain everything from the prosecution attorney. But everybody is charged the exactly the same. The only caveat is that they can get the initial case report, which is the, the initial case paper report from the officer if they're identified victim. Outside of that, everything is the exact same.
And that's because of Colo- Colorado law.
Correct.
That says we can't charge different people different rates.
Correct.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hersberg.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, the number of just citizen requests were pretty small. Um, would, does the PD have the discretion to make, say, exceptions to waive fees if there were extenuating circumstances? Do they have leverage to do so?
Uh, I think we always have discretion on that. Uh, it is one of those situations that, um, i- it's a case by case, and, and I don't want to say yes or no. I just want to say that we have discretion.
Okay.
Um, and it, that's something that would come up at that time.
Okay, and that really was my question is, is that there is root space in that question for, um, exceptions? Should you warrant it?
Oh, always. And, and there may be incidents, and I, and I want to get specific, but there may be incidents where an officer says, "Hey, this is what I've seen," gone to the supervision staff and says, "We need to try to help this person out with that," and, and that might be something that comes up. But on a daily normal, we need to have something that is set, um, because it is for, everyone needs to know what they're, what they're going to end up paying when they, when they come in.
Councilmember H- Hinton?
Yes, and as a follow-up to that question, who makes that exception? Who's the proven authority for that exception?
Well, as of right now, uh, I supervise our records division, so typically it would come to me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for, or comments from any other council members? Councilmember Duncan?
So you may have mentioned this, um, but we are, this has been brought before us because, um, some people request items, request these records, and then they don't come. And then we spend all these hours, um, doing the work that's required to get this information to them, and then they don't pay, they don't come and get it, right?
Uh, yeah, so we're, we're looking at doing this to try to, to cover the cost of what it is costing the city per statute that we can recoup for this, because this is something that a private individual is requesting. Uh, we went and looked at it, and it was probably about twenty-five percent of the thirteen last year, uh, that didn't come in and, and retrieve them, but again, those are already prepaid because it's only forty-five dollars and then ten dollars for the additional. And most of those were from traffic accidents and people involved in DUIs, and a- at the time, we're always telling them, "You can get that from your attorney for free," um, but they feel that they want to come and get it the next week after they're arrested.
Okay, any other questions or comments from anybody up here? All right, uh, if you have a comment and you're in the audience, please come down to the center, um, podium there and state your name for the record.
Hi, Bryce O'Brien. I just want to give another perspective to this because there is another perspective. In a situation I had years ago where I needed a copy of body cam footage for an incident where I needed a protective order, and the night that I needed it, that I needed something done, the officers wouldn't file charges against the person, so I had to do something personally outside of Fountain PD, and I would need all of that, and I did need all of that, and I went and paid for it and got all of that. So, and I had to do it, like you said, prior. I had to go pay and fill out the form down at the PD at that time and to get it. And so to me, I think that that cost, because there was quite a lot of footage, but it was all very meaningful for me. I needed it, and the, they needed it for me to get that order, and if I didn't have it, that wouldn't have happened, but there was no charge filed. They wouldn't press charges. So in some instances, it doesn't work for a citizen because I'd have to have paid an exorbitant amount of money at thirty dollars an hour to have that redacted. Okay? So that's just my opinion.
Matt, there are other ways to get it if you are a victim, right? Uh, that, that these victim advocate groups would help people?
Yeah, so she is speaking in reference to, uh, what we would call a no probable cause domestic violence, where the officers deemed at that time that there was no probable cause to file charges, um, and she was seeking a civil protection order at that point. So I know under civil protection orders, you can go down to the courthouse, and if there is the claim of domestic violence that is in that order, the temporary protection order which is initially filed, that's basically handwritten. You're not allowed to bring evidence or anything like that to court with you. And at that point, a, uh, if the judge grants that, then there's a permanent protection order hearing, usually within fourteen days, and that's the point where, uh, evidence can be introduced and things like that. Unfortunately, I, I can't, I don't want to go down the road of people aren't victims that are victims, but I can't, my records technicians can't make that determination, unfortunately. Um, that is nothing I would ever put on them or have that weight put on them. But as of right now, uh, they would have to pay for those, uh, those fees.
Okay, thank you. But I know a lot of these advocate groups do help.
There are, there are a lot of groups that help.
Because there's a lot of people get out and they, they literally don't even have the shoes on their feet.
And there are resources that are provided, uh, at the courthouse during the, uh, filing of a temporary protection orders.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to say something in regards to this?
Mayor, would that be a good time to read in?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so I think, uh- So I think it was Mr. RC, if I'm saying that right, was here last time this was discussed, and as the council knows, sent in an email to the council, but he couldn't be here tonight, so I wanted to read that into the record, because he couldn't be here, so I'm just reading his words. He says, first let me say that as a citizen of this community, I fully endorse the concept that we should try to provide a reasonable price for reasonable services provided to community members. My request at the last city council meeting that we discussed this resolution was, if wording would be considered, allowing victims of domestic violence who were applying for civil protection, protective order, to be given some avenue obtaining the evidence that they might need at a reduced rate. While there was a significant amount of approximate numbers put forth at the last meeting by Fountain Police Department regarding hours possibly spent on redaction and approximate costs in manpower hours, I would like to address some of the comments made regarding victims of abuse and their claims, and the issue of whether they are involved in divorce proceedings, as I believe I have a significant expertise in this area. To be clear, we are only referring to incidents where an interaction with law enforcement has occurred and no arrest has been made during that interaction. Had an arrest been made, then we are now talking about a criminal procedure, and victims have an avenue for obtaining the footage at almost no cost. First, I'd like to start with the belief put forth at the last meeting regarding that somebody's saying that they are a victim, and they also, and they often are involved in divorce proceedings. Since there was not, since there was not an arrest, there was no probable cause fined by the officer, since per statute, if an officer has probable cause that a crime has been committed, they are to make an arrest. However, whether someone is a victim of abuse is a more complicated judgment, is a more complicated judgment call. What we do know is that over the last twenty-plus years, the FBI Crime Report has stated consistently that only approximately twelve percent of domestic violence incidents investigated turn by, investigated by turnout to be false allegations. However, only approximately fifty percent or calls or service calls for domestic violence end with an arrest at the national level, FBI Crime Report. This coincides with the average thirty-four hundred calls that Colorado Springs Police Department responds to that results in only an average of five hundred arrests. Although I do not have numbers for Fountain, I would be confident that they are, they at least conform to the national average. Next, when we consider the dynamics of domestic violence, that emotional abuse incidents, which statistically have the lowest incidence of arrests, have the highest level of lethality when the victim attempts to leave the relationship, and in fact, a victim has an average of seven attempts to leave an abusive relationship before they are successful, resigning to stay in the relationship or are killed, either by the offender or through suicide. The important component, or the third important component to consider is the avenues available for a victim to try to remain safe. When an arrest is made, there is automatically a criminal restraining order, CRO, issued that is part of the criminal case. A victim is also encouraged to obtain a civil protection order, a CPO. An arrest often helps a magistrate in a civil protective order case determine that the requirements of the statute for a CPO is met. However, in many cases where an arrest is not made, often the only avenue the victim has is to request, request a CPO. The CPO process allows for a temporary order to be issued ex parte if the affidavit the victim submits meets the criteria for the statute. A temporary order is valid for up to fourteen days, during which the restrained party must be served, and a permanent restraining order hearing is scheduled. This is now the point at which Resolution twenty-four dash zero zero five could potentially come into play. There has not been an arrest made, so the camera evidence is not brought into play as it might in a criminal proceeding. This is a civil proceeding alone, and only a small percentage of the CPOs filed by victims are followed through by the victim. The abuse in these cases often includes not only emotional abuse, stalking, and potentially physical abuse, but also economic abuse, where the offender has cut them off from bank accounts, their phone, insurance, and any financial resource they would normally have. A three hundred to five hundred dollar would be an undue burden for a victim to obtain a CPO, and because of how interactions with officers can help a magistrate contextualize the abuse, if a victim wants to obtain some semblance of safety in leaving the situation, they would be forced to somehow find this money or risk not meeting the criteria for a CPO. It is also extremely common that if a victim has also made the decision to legally end a relationship through divorce, the courts, for the courts to roll a protective order into a no contact order as part of the divorce case, rather than issue the permanent order protection, since a permanent order for domestic violence can often carry additional ramifications, an offender is much more likely to accept a no contact order as part of the divorce case. Taking all I have presented, I see it as a reasonable request to come to a medium regarding charging a fair price for a service while still making an allowance for victims of domestic violence to pursue an avenue of safety. For, if our city strategic plan is to include community-focused public safety resources that provide reliable access to public safety services, then we cannot ignore or impede even one victim's pursuit of safety. I appreciate this opportunity to present my perspective on Resolution twenty-four dash zero zero five. Signed, Stephen RC. And then Mr. RC sent an additional email earlier today, I think when he realized he couldn't make it. It's much shorter, I'll read that really quick. Councilmembers, unfortunately, due to an unexpected conflict with work, I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting to participate in the discussion regarding Resolution twenty-four dash zero zero five. However, I believe my letter dated twenty-six March, which is the one I just read, has already vocalized my largest concerns. Again, I want to emphasize that I'm not opposed to FPD charging a fair fee for the routine request for video footage where the request fails, falls out of the typical use in a criminal proceeding. However, in order to ensure that we as a community do everything we can to ensure that victims of abuse, even when an arrest is not made, still have fair and reasonable access to a resource that could make or break the ability to obtain safety. I have provided the council with accurate and verifiable statistics that explain the issue as concisely as possible, and offered my twenty-five-plus years' experience working in this particular field as a resource. I've also consulted with other experts in the field to ensure I am giving the most current and reasonable suggestions. I like to bring something to the table rather than just criticism. I would look at offering wording into the resolution that would allow those individuals who have filed and pursued an application for PPO for domestic violence, stalking, or sexual assault, to subpoena supporting footage, and have those requests be charged the same fee that you would charge the courts when they require the footage for a criminal case. Again, as stated in my previous letter, you are actually speaking about a very small population of requests. I hope you vote with wisdom and prudence. Respectfully, Stephen RC. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Racine, did you have a chance to reach out to Mr. AC?
No, ma'am.
RC?
I did not reach out to him. Last council meeting that I was here that I spoke, I spoke to him in the hallway for about twenty minutes. I understand where he's coming from, but again, like I stated before, you know, it's, my records technicians cannot determine who is a victim of unfiled charges or who is a victim that is going through personal matters with an individual, I can't put that on them statutorily, and I can't put that on them just being a person.
Sylvia, we have a charge for CORRAS requests, right?
That's correct, and per hour on research for a CORRAS request is thirty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Okay.
We actually require that the requestor of any records through Colorado Open Records Act, we, we receive their request, and then we offer them a cost estimate of what it looks like, and then we require payment prior to doing the research.
Okay, thank you. So this is not an unstandard procedure?
No.
And those fees in that procedure is set by state statute, the CORRAS, and so we're pretty, we're pretty limited to what we can do in terms of a CORRAS request.
Right, right. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead, I don't see anybody else from the audience jumping up here, so I'm gonna go ahead and bring this back up to the diocese. Council have any questions or comments for Commander Racine? Councilmember Rick?
Just a comment. You know, this is a typical situation we find ourselves in, not only here in the government, but in our personal and our private lives. If our car has issues and we take it to a mechanic, he's gonna charge us a diagnostic fee, and he's gonna tell us, here's how many hours it's gonna take me to fix your car, and this is what it's gonna cost. It's a, it's a flat fee, it's not something they, they come up with, they, they do some research and they have a fee and you have to pay it. Same thing with the CORRAS requests. We can not like the fee, we can wish it was different, but unfortunately, this is the way our, our world operates these days. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hersberg?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, so when I was asking about, you know, exceptions being possible, you know, case by case, that would generally be the types of requests that we're talking about right now, where there wasn't an arrest, there are extenuating circumstances, someone needs something, we would have the opportunity to make a case by case judgment, or you would, in those situations?
Yes, I would.
That's really what we're talking about, right?
And again, being in this business for over twenty-three years, and not to ever put anybody down or talk bad about somebody coming in, but they could have gotten arrested for a DUI and say, I need this for a protection order because my wife made me drink. Again, that would have to come to me, I don't want to put that on my records technicians, but there are extenuating circumstances that the officers at the police department can make and/or the records technicians can, can speak with me in regards to that.
Okay, I'm sorry, public comment time is over. Okay, any other questions or comments from council members? I'd like to thank you for the time you put into this, researching it and coming back to us with it, I think it's made it a bit easier. I don't want to make this part of the resolution, but I think, Scott, we really need to look seriously at addressing the payment issue. I know you want to put it in the budget next year, but if we could come to the budget time with maybe some research and some proposals, rather than starting on it in January?
We're actually gonna be working on it as we, as we go, work with SIPA to install our new website. That's all part of that.
Okay, because I'm sure there's other things people could pay on there too, so, yeah. I'm sure there's other things besides this that people could pay.
No, it's definitely, it's much bigger than the PD.
Okay, I know when we set, set it up for taking online payments of the gazebo and the park fees, it took a really long time, so we should be through all those complications. I actually reserved a gazebo a couple weeks ago, and it went through super easy, so that one hopefully is fixed. So, okay, so this is just a request for the resolution, I'm sorry, for amending the fees. So what would council like to do with this?
Move to approve Resolution twenty-four dash zero zero five.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Can we have a motion in a second on the resolution? Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you very much. That takes us on to item nine, new business. Nine A, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda, there are none. Item nine B, Resolution number twenty-four dash zero one four, a resolution amending the appropriation of fiscal year FY 2024 budgeting funds. Ms. Dale?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, I'm bringing before you the first supplemental for the fiscal year 2024, and the city council adopted a budget for 2024 on December 12th, 2023, and since then, city personnel have identified additional necessary expenditures and additional revenues that correspond with several of those expenditures that were not included in the original budget. Thank you, Bessie. Additionally, final numbers for 2023 expenditures on capital projects were not available until March 2024, just due to timing of when we receive invoices, so staff is recommending a carry forward of those 2023 budgeted but unspent or not completed capital project funds that are now anticipated to be spent in 2024. So we are therefore recommending formal approval by council to amend the budgets for the funds listed here on the presentation, and keep in mind that these supplement, these supplementals and the carry forward processes are standard processes and are also considered best practices by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board for ensuring that only items appropriated by council are spent during the budget year. So I'm gonna go through, just rather quickly, I won't go line by line, you have the exhibits within your packets, and I apologize, some of these are kind of small, I was trying to get as much justification on there as I could, but with the general fund revenues, we're asking for an increase of about 5.8 million. The brunt of those is from the NRCS grant that, for the Banley Bridge repair, which you all already approved on March 26th with Mr. McDonald, and then also the remainder of the CDOT grants and the Challenger money for the Indiana Avenue project to get that completed this year as well. On the expenditure side, again, we're about 5.9 million, and the brunt of that is the Indiana project and the NRCS Banley Bridge repair, and then a couple of other minor projects, one of those being a $50,000 for a cybersecurity grant that our IT department obtained this year, and we're very thankful for that. Overall, this creates a decrease in the unrestricted fund balance in the general fund of about $47,000, but that does include the $425,000 for the NRCS bridge grant that you all already approved last month. Into the water fund, there is an increase in the revenue side of about 1.26 million, and that is from the county ARPA reimbursement for the Fountain Reservoir Project. Additionally, $400,000 from the reclamation grant for the water meter upgrade projects. So the expenses for the water meter project you'll see in the carry forward in Exhibit B. On the expenditure side for water, the biggest piece of this is 6.5 million for the south wing, southwest, excuse me, Southwest Link Pipe Project, which those are paid for by the ARPA dollars that have already been set aside previously by council, and any shortfall of that would be paid for additionally by remaining 2019 bond proceeds that we already have in a restricted cash account. Overall, this creates a decrease right now in expended, in the net position of the water fund of about 6.2 million, however, that will be reclaimed in the end of the year, in December of '24, when we transfer the ARPA dollars from deferred revenue to recognized revenue for this year. Some of the smaller funds, we've received a request from the Heritage Maintenance District, they would like to spend $200,000 to complete improvements and upgrades to their park, so this will come out of their fund balance and will be a decrease to their fund balance. On the drainage fund side, this is for the NRCS grant revenue for the Old Pueblo Road Bridge Repair and their corresponding expense account, again, approved by you on March 26th, so the decrease in the net position here for the drainage fund is just that $375,000 grant match that the city has to provide. On the insurance side of things, for the insurance fund, we're requesting $45,000 for a partnership with UC Health Training to decrease public safety employee injuries and potential workers' comp claims. This was a project that we actually started last year in 2023, and it seems, and it seems to be working well, so we'd like to continue it on into 2024. We just didn't have those numbers when we did the 2024 budget. Moving on to Exhibit B, these are the carry forwards from the capital projects from last year that were not spent and were not completed, and so we're moving them, we would request to move them forward into 2024. Some of the bigger pieces of this are the CDOT grant match for the Link Road Residen for $330,000. This was a project that we had originally budgeted a couple of years ago and was put on delay by CDOT. We have now started construction of that, per Todd, design of it this year, so we're going to need that grant match this year. In addition, there's $274,000 for the Aga Park restroom and concession building, and that, we couldn't start last year because the park's new building was not completed, and so we have to have that building completed first before we can start the next building. On the water fund side of things, the capital projects, the biggest one is the water meter replacement program for $600,000, and it was not completed last year just due to significant lead times on delivery of the new water meters, we've seen that across the board in several different departments, and then $122,000 to finish the Fountain Reservoir Project. Some smaller items, on the electric side, $24,000 for radio replacements, these were actually ordered in 2023 but have not been delivered yet, and so we can't pay for them until they're delivered. On the ambulance fund, $66,000 just to complete the new ambulance that went into service because we did not receive the invoices to finish the equipment and the decals of that until first quarter of 2024. And on the Conservation Trust side of things, $48,000 for the Fountain Mesa Park restroom upgrades, the delay was caused by a material supply and ADA access issues, and so those are all of the funds that have requested a carry forward. So... So with that, I would like to open it up to questions from council. I don't have anything else.
Do we have any questions from anyone in council? Okay. Do we have any questions or comments from anybody in the audience? Okay. Would you like us to wait until Councilmember Estes returns? I'm getting a drink, I think she needs a drink of water. 'Tis the allergy season, right? All righty. Okay. You didn't die back there. Okay. All right. Okay. What would council like to do with Item 9B, Resolution Number 24-014? Councilmember Duncan?
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-014.
Councilmember Hersberg?
I second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Thank you, council.
Okay, that takes us on to Item 9C, Resolution 24-015, a resolution authorizing the City of Fountain to procure a substation transformer from UTB Transformer. Mr. Burrows?
To kind of summarize what we're looking at here, the, the electric, excuse me, the electric utility has identified the need and begun project planning for a new substation to support existing hand-planned customer load on the north end of, of our system. While doing this preliminary planning and budgeting, we actually discovered that there was a reseller, UTB Transformers. They have a unused transformer available for sale. After we have reviewed the drawings, specifications, we've determined that it, it is appropriate for our application at the planned new substation. So contingent upon the satisfactory test results, the benefits of this kind of unique procurement opportunity include, first of all, lead times for transformers right now are three years. Whereas if we were able to get this transformer, we would have it with, in a matter of weeks. To put a little perspective on that, if we were to pick, if we were to kick the project off tomorrow, it wouldn't be until second quarter of 2027 until we would actually be able to put the, the substation online. If we get this, we would be able to complete design, construction, and commission within 10 to 12 months, probably. So equally as important there, because it is unused and it's resale, we're expecting about a 30% cost savings on, on the purchase. And if, you know, compared to if we were to order a newly constructed transformer. So it's about all I have. We appreciate your guys' consideration. Any questions?
Councilmember Applegate?
Yes, so, no warranty on that, but it's basically, it's, they're selling it to us as used, but it's pretty much new, correct?
Correct. It's, it's brand new as it was shipped to the original purchasing utility. It just needs to be assembled, they'll test it on site there, ship it to us, and at that point, we'll store it until we're ready to actually put it into service.
Okay. And the water is sufficient for what we need?
Correct. Yep, everything, yep.
Okay. Right on.
You took my question about the warranty. That's right. Want the warranty, want the warranty, yes. Okay. Any other questions from anybody up here? Councilmember Hinton?
And I did hear you say that upon, I think it's in the contract, that upon, I guess, test completion is when we will take hold of that, whatever that is. I know that's a language that you guys, Dillon, I don't know, but just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence before we purchase it, correct?
Correct, yes. We will not purchase it unless it, unless the test results are satisfactory, correct?
All right, thank you.
All right. Anybody yet more questions up here? Any questions from anybody in the audience? Please come down to the center podium and state your name for the record.
I just noticed that on your, in your paperwork, that the quote was only good for 10 days. Has that been recertified because that 10 days expired?
Oh, it, it is definitely solid. We actually provided them with an intent to purchase, just so they would hold it so we could get through the council process.
Okay.
Okay. Please come down and state your name for the record.
Yeah, Sam Fortune. So, damn. So this has no warranty on it?
Correct.
So you're intent to buy something, no warranty, and then let it sit for how long?
Um, we will, it could be a year, it could be two years. However, it will be tested and they're...
I worked for the government for a long time, and we did the same thing, and shit breaks.
Sure.
When you just let it sit. So, and no warranty? I don't know, how much is this going to cost versus a brand-new one with a warranty?
This will be 30% approximately more affordable than a brand-new transformer that will take three years.
I don't know about y'all, but I, I wouldn't buy it, especially if it's going to be sitting for a year. It's going to break, and you got no warranty, and then you're going to be out that money, and then the money to actually get one, and the time spent. Just saying, it's common sense.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Okay. Nobody else in the audience? Councilmember Rick?
Mr. Christian, you've got 20-some years, I believe, in the electrical industry. What's the odds or the percentage that if we buy this and let it sit for a year or two, that it's going to break?
It, it won't break. We'll pull the bushings out, ground it, so, I mean, you just isolate it from lightning, it'll be fine.
Okay, that's all I have.
Once the tests are done, we, we unassemble it and ground it.
That's all I have, ma'am, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
Sir, if, if you could just give me, do you have the original price, how much it would cost for a brand-new one? Do you have that price on hand by any chance?
We did not get any formal quotes, only budgetary.
And your best guess meant what, what would a new one cost?
Around $600,000.
And this one is at 30%?
Correct. Yeah, 395, I believe, is...
You do the math, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, let's bring it back up here to the dais. What would council like to do with this resolution? I cannot tell. Oh, there we go. Councilmember Applegate?
Motion to approve Resolution 24-015.
Councilmember Estes?
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us on to Item 10, City Council Agenda Request. Does anyone have any agenda requests tonight? Okay. Councilmember Hersberg?
I, I'm not sure how much of a request it is, but I mentioned, and I don't remember now if it was during council or during a planning session, the possibility of us getting the presentation decks included in our packets so we can just have a, a look ahead. I just wanted to see if that was still a possibility. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we don't need that on the agenda, right, Scott?
No, no, we'll just get with clerk's office if that can happen.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. It is helpful to get stuff ahead of time. Yep. All right. All right, Madam Clerk, do you want an executive session tonight because it's your last meeting?
Absolutely not. No executive sessions tonight.
She wants to go out on a good note with everybody, huh? All right. I do want to address something that happened tonight during the meeting. We did have public citizen time to be heard. We did request cards. I, I mentioned at the beginning, I only had two cards. If anybody wanted to say anything, please go fill out a card. And then I mentioned it a second time, and then I got cards after we'd already closed public comments. So if you submitted a card, and it's something to do with the powers extension, you can get together with Todd, or you can go on the CDOT website, be happy to go over it with you, and otherwise, when you come back to the next meeting, and our public comment time was a little bit later tonight than usual since our presentations went a little bit longer, but we do need you to fill out those cards at the beginning. So thank you very much, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.